This conference will now be recorded.
This is the meeting of the Devonport Public Library Board of Trustees for Tuesday, August 17th, 2021. My name is Steve Emming. I'm president of the Library Board of Trustees and we are meeting in the large meeting room of the main library. First item on our agenda for today is to have a roll call. Judy Lance?
Yes.
There you are. Thank you. Tom Engelmann here. Joe Heinrichs?
Yes, here.
Amanda Motto?
Here.
Thank you. Craig Cooper here. Malavika Shrikanthi?
Here.
Thank you. And trustees Sylvia Roba and Maggie Motto are unable to attend today. So that we do have a call. And let's also like to introduce the staff members and others who are attending the meeting. Library Director Amy Grosskopf, HR Operations Manager Jennifer Williams, Development Director Tracy Moore, Casey Shipley, our recorder, Jerry Skelak, Friends Board President, and Barry and McGinnis are liaison to the city council. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Thank you, Tom. Is there a second?
A second.
Go. Okay. Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there a discussion? Hearing, seeing, and I'll call for the vote. Judy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Craig Cooper?
Yes.
Malavika?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public with comment. Seeing and hearing no one, I continue on. Next item on the agenda is reports and communications. First item there is the Friends. Does anyone have anything to report, Jerry?
He did not meet in July due to lack of court. We are still in need of additional members to try to meet forums. So hopefully that will be not the case in August. Probably the only thing I have to report is that Friends will have a table at the upcoming Thursday event and be represented at that particular event. Other than that, nothing important.
Okay. Thank you, Jerry. Next item on the agenda is committee reports. First item there is finance. Anything, Tom?
Well, you noticed that there were two budget recaps in your information. One was the end of the year for 2021 and the other one was the first beginning of the new budget year. They both appear to be very good or understanding our budgeted numbers. So everything looks good.
Thank you, Tom. Next item on our committee reports is personnel. Amanda? Craig, anything there?
Nothing new on my end.
Nothing to report. Okay.
Thank you. Next item is advocacy. Malavika?
Steve and all trustees, I just would like to repeat, if you don't mind, whenever you get a moment, if you could share any contacts you have with any nonprofit or businesses, the DEI committee, subcommittee, subcommittee would like to see how we can outreach certain communities, populations in our city for, you know, getting in touch with people and, you know, doing some outreach activities. That was, that was my request and I, any email or text with the information would be super great. Thank you. And I want to thank Brittany Peacock, our outreach supervisor librarian. She did half sheet invitations for hashtag Iowa 175 celebrations, which are happening on August 19th. And I was able to write a few personal notes and send it out as invitations and I'm hoping people come, the invites that I sent. So she, she printed around 30 to 40 of them and I mailed them a week and a half ago. So just wanted to thank her for doing it. That was it. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you for doing that. Okay. Next item on the agenda is record reports. Anything to, anything to do or anything to amplify in?
Sure. A few updates on what I sent. I indicated that the early literacy coordinator and social worker positions would be posted soon, but Jennifer got those posted today. So those are up and we're recruiting for that. I had some conversation with Jen Dyson, the Parks Director about the, kind of the gaps in services on that kind of west central part of Davenport for the community center project at Fairmont this morning. And so we have some ideas with that. And Alderman Dunn has been assigned as our council liaison for that particular project. The, the survey for the strategic plan, so that is now closed. We ended up with 368 responses. So not quite the 500 we were hoping for, but the consultant thinks that that was a good representative sample for that. Summer reading, we just got some statistics yesterday in terms of participation in the summer reading program and all of our numbers are certainly above what they were last year during the pandemic. I wanted to say during the pandemic, but I guess it's still going on. But at any rate, one thing for worse. But I mean, I think the really good news is that our numbers this year are almost double last year and the total is actually slightly higher than our most recent pre-pandemic numbers. And so I think that that is really a win and the youth services department did a really amazing job getting all that put together this year. So that program does continue through August 28th. So those are not final numbers yet either. So we extended the season this year because we wanted kids to have a chance to return their logs to their school in case they couldn't get the library to do that. Because we know that we missed a number of kids in terms of they've, they've completed the program, they just don't ever get a chance to turn in their logs. So they're not included in the drawing. So we wanted to make sure that we did that this year. And then, yes, just a reminder. So Thursday is the hashtag Iowa 175 event here at the library. So please feel free to come, register. It's all free. And like, so do you want to plan it though? So like, plan to come right at 4:30 and just in case you also want to go to Party in the Park, which is what I'll be doing. So I'll be here really early at 4:30. Everything's going. And then I'll be rushing off to do Party in the Park in Northwest Park. So, but I think it'll be a really good time. They have, I think, close to 80 people registered. So it's a free registration. We're just looking for numbers. So if you don't register, nobody will tell you you can't come in. So we're just trying to get my ideas of the numbers for that. And I think, I think that's it.
Thank you, Amy. Next item under Communications is?
Could I just bring you the question?
Sure.
One of the things you mentioned in here was the main renovation project where we're at on it. And down at the bottom, you talk about funds available or 1.752 million, but the total cost we have, you think it's about 1.18. And then you were saying that putting money back in a levy reserve. I guess, and you did mention things such as refreshing the front porch and landscaping, you know, I would prefer we look at doing those things and making the whole Main Street campus look good.
Okay.
Rather than put the money back in the library reserve. That's just one trustee's opinion.
Well, appreciate that. It's actually, I should mention, that's, that's kind of, that part of the report was, was sort of my way to start to bring up that discussion and have you folks think about it. So Casey and I had a little conversation about, if you remember, there were a variety of different funds that we pulled from when we had to cut our capital campaign a little short because of the pandemic and didn't really raise the million dollars we were really looking for. So we were looking for, there's some of the gift accounts that have been just kind of stagnant for a number of years to use some of that funding. And then also the board voted an additional 200, 250,000 of levy reserve money to that, to that project because we needed to be able to show the city clearly. And the Friends, I think, put some extra in too, that we were, we had the money to do the project at the amount that the architect thought it was going to come in at. And then when it came in so, so favorable to us in terms of the bid costs, we ended up, you know, overfunded to quite a significant extent. So we had Casey and I's conversation about, well, if we, if we don't spend it all because we don't want to make, make up projects, right? I mean, I completely agree that the landscaping on Fourth Street and all that just is desperately in need of something. And the front porch could stand some, some updating as well for sure and, and look nicer. But we had some discussion about like, if we, if we refund some of those or change our plans in terms of where we pull some of that money from, where's the most logical place to put it back? And we thought the levy reserve was probably the most logical place to do that. But, but we certainly will look at landscaping options.
Are those funds only allowed at this facility? Because don't you have some issues up at Fairmont?
So the, the money that was raised by the Friends was specifically raised for the main library renovations. The, the other funds, the board voted to spend those on the main library renovations. So it would take a board action to redirect those.
But it's not?
But it's not required. Right?
It's, it's just simply required to spend on the library. And that's fine.
Yeah.
I just didn't know if it all had to go to this.
Right, right. No, so it's just where it's allocated right now, except for the Friends money. Because, you know, we told grant funders that that money was going to the main library renovation and private donors. And so that's where it needs to go.
True. You have questions? You could mention that the donor wall is now in place. That's pretty nice. Notice that when I came in. Okay. Moving along. Next item on the agenda is new business. First item there is a motion to approve eliminating fines for the young adult materials in all formats. Maybe mentioned this our last meeting, I believe. And as I recall, seen somewhere, there's something just over $800 in fines were collected for that in the past year. So that's what we're talking about. And this is kind of a trend. Actually, something has been going on in the River Share libraries.
Right. Yeah. So this is a, all of the River Share member libraries are planning to take this action and a number of the libraries therefore has already taken this action. So we don't want to be the outlier because that gets confusing to our patrons. Like, you know, so I had this item from the Scott County Library System and it's a YA item and it was late and there was no fine on it. But now I returned yours and it was delayed and now I owe 10 cents kind of thing. So consistency, since we share material so much is very helpful to us.
I'm moved to approve eliminating fines for young adult materials. Sorry. Thank you. Tom and Craig? We have a motion and a second to approve the elimination of fines for young adult materials in all formats. Is there any discussion?
What do we do? I mean, are we going to track materials not making it back or whatever?
Yeah, we certainly keep, we were still charging for materials checked out and not returned. Right? So we still send all the regular overdue notices and things that we do. And once that third notice is sent, then we send bill notices. So, so materials still need to be returned or the patron is charged for them. But just, this just means that, you know, if it comes in three days late, there's not that 10 cent a day charged with, you know, recognizing that a lot of, you know, kids who are checking out YA materials, they really don't have agency over whether or not their items get returned on time because it might, might require mom or dad or some other responsible adult to, to, you know, get in the car and return those things. But then the child's card is blocked and they can't check out materials or access things online, you know, access ebooks and things like that. So this is, as Steve said, really an issue and really a trend in, in public libraries all across the country, complete elimination of fines on all materials because it's also seen as an equity issue. And we have had comments from some low income residents of Davenport who have said, well, you know, even if fined free for juvenile materials, I'm concerned about that because what if, you know, the dog eats it or, you know, it's a toddler book and my, you know, my kid manages to, you know, spill peanut butter all over it or something like that, right? You know, they're concerned that something's going to be damaged and they're creating a financial liability. So, so certainly fines are seen as that financial liability, you know? So I checked this thing out and I'm going to use it and I really appreciate that. But then something happens in my life. My car breaks down, my this, my that, my the other thing. And 10 cents a day doesn't sound like a lot to any of us. But, you know, that can add up pretty quickly. And now I've got a $5 fine and I can't pay it. And so now I'm losing access. So, so a lot of libraries have completely eliminated fines, but they're all still require, clearly requiring that item to be returned because otherwise you're not a lending library anymore. You're just giving more materials. So.
Any other discussion? Okay. Hearing now, call for the vote on the motion to approve eliminating fines for young adult materials in all formats. Tom?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Malavika?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a motion to approve the fiscal year 2023 library business plan. Same format, of course, as last year and a few updates, but generally speaking, it remains the same. Anything you wanted to point out there before we delve into it?
Um, just that, you know, so clearly the performance indicators, some of them are kind of sad looking. That's all COVID related. When our doors are closed, it's really difficult to have people attend programs and check out materials and things like that. The projections, you know, even for fiscal 22 and especially for fiscal 23, I mean, those are all COVID dependent as well, right? So our, our usage has come back. Whether we're going to see, you know, things start to drop off again is, you know, if COVID cases continue to rise, you know, in Davenport and Scott County, I think we just don't really know the answer to that. So that's probably, that's probably the biggest guess in the whole thing is nobody really knows what's going to happen with that.
Goals have also been updated to include the items from the arc of funding, hiring a full-time library, social worker, adding the maker program, which is a space which is part of the updates and other mentions such as the quitting the community center at Fairmont. Okay. With that meeting, we entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year 2023 library business plan.
So.
Thank you, Joe.
Second.
Thank you, Tom. And a motion, a second to approve the fiscal year 2023 library business plan. Is there any discussion?
Steve and Amy, no discussion, but just wanted to share with you about the social worker in the library. I just shared the good news with the MSW department here at Amrose. The two ladies would come to do the presentation and they've sent their sincere thanks and they were very happy to hear it and wanted to thank you for pushing it in, you know, in the sense promoting it and wanted to thank you for it. So that was it. Thank you.
Terrific.
Thank you, Malavika. Any further discussion? Hearing, seeing, and I'll call for the vote. Joe?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Thank you. Craig?
Yes.
Malavika?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
My own vote is yes. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a motion to approve the general wage increase of 1.75% for the library director. A bit of recollection and memory jogging on this. This is a general salary increase that all, is it directors? Just directors?
All city staff.
All city staff receives. And, but everybody else in the city receives that by virtue of the, I guess, being a city employee. But in the case of the library director, that's under our purview. So we have to approve the library director's general wage increase. So that's what this motion is about. May I have a motion to approve the general wage increase of 1.75% for the library director?
So.
I second Steve. Malavika?
Thank you, Malavika. And Tom? Okay. We have a motion, a second to approve the general wage increase of 1.75% for the library director. Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, a call for the vote.
No, I do have a question.
Oh, yes, Joe.
During the interview process, there's very good chance that what we offer is going to be different than what is current. Is that going to be affected by this then?
Well.
Or are we set in stone what we're allowed to offer? Does the city dictate what we're allowed to offer for the new position?
They've, they've given us a range that the position can be posted at. So there's a maximum, you know, clearly there's, you know, minimum is not. But, but they've given us some, a maximum that they feel keeps within range of directors of other departments that are on the same grade for how they work with their salaries. So.
Any other discussion?
Amanda?
Yes. No, just, thank you, Joe. Call for the vote, Amanda?
Yes.
Thank you. Craig?
Yes.
Malavika?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes. The motion carries. Back on task. Next item on the agenda is a motion to approve the request of Cafe de Marie regarding the Eastern Branch Cafe lease. They had initially intended to be open at Eastern now, but because of the pandemic, were not able to open. And so during that time, they're also still paying rent. So they've asked to have that rent deferred with now planning to open in November, November 1st and have that rent while they were unable to open to pick up for November, December, January, I guess. But anyway, in the future, I don't remember the exact dates. Oh, thank you, Tom.
Ken?
Okay. So they believe now that they can be in the space the first of November and they would then be paid in full if we allow them to defer that from November until March. So yes, that's right. And then they would resume paying the, the rent from that, that portion, that period of time also. Okay.
So a couple of things with this is that Casey went back through our books and they've actually paid only three months of rent, not before they indicate. So.
Okay.
So they, we received rent for May, June, and July. Their lease started in April. But since, you know, they were going to be kind of moving in in April and getting things set up, we did not charge them April rent. So, so they were billed and they're billed at the end of the month. So they were billed June, July, and August 1st for May, June, July rent. And that, and we have received that. So, and we have spent $656 on electrical work to get the space ready for them. So just kind of is informational on that in terms of, so that's kind of what we're in for on the space right at this point in time to get ready for them. So.
So, okay. So just to be sure then, they would begin paying again in April?
Right. But that's giving them four, the four months, they're saying we've paid four months of rent. And so we'd like to four months transferred, but they really only paid three months of rent.
So then they would actually, okay. So then they actually would only be?
So they?
Start in March.
So it should, yeah. So if you wanted, that would be, yes, it would need to be March to, to have that equal out. Yeah.
So what's that? Ever recommendation? Since it's different than what they?
These numbers aren't adding up. If they went, if they've paid up until, you're saying they paid three months, they're asking for five months to term it.
Yeah, they're asking for time without, without making a payment. Well, they get billed at the end of the month. So that's, so their, their May rent, they were billed for on June 1st.
Okay.
So, so that makes it hard to follow too. So their, their lease started in April. They didn't owe any rent for April.
Okay. So then wouldn't it be the end of February? So March 1st would be the next time that they would be billed if we go with three months?
So November would be?
September, January, February.
So that'd be their three months. And then March, we would start billing them rent again. So they would get billed for that April 1st. So they would start paying rent. They would pay rent in March, but they don't get billed for that until they?
They're moving in in November, aren't they? November?
Right.
December, January.
Okay. Yeah.
So actually it should be February 1st that we start billing.
Yeah. Right. To have that work out that way. Yeah. Yep.
Okay. Amy, are you going to have to go back to them and straighten out, or not, up when they, when they would actually start it? Like as Joe mentioned, I mean?
I think.
Or we could make a motion.
You can make the motion and say, this is, this is what we're offering you. Right? This, this is the modification that we're offering. I checked with Tom Warner, the city attorney, about how best to handle this. You know, like, do we just stop the lease and then create a new one? You know, one for, with showing a new start date. But he, he recommended, you know, taking this approach and that this motion would then be, if approved would be, or however approved would be that the paperwork that documents that, how that's going to be handled.
And do they feel confident that they will be in November 1st?
Well, that's what they're saying. I mean, that's, so I guess that's one question I had for the board and I think you might want to consider is if they don't open November 1st, do we, do you feel like, you know what, this, it's been, you know, all this time and, and we're not feeling positive that it is going to open and then just turn? do we, do you feel like, you know what, this, it's been, you know, all this time and, and we're not feeling positive that it is going to open and then just terminate the lease at that point? And and I, I guess I don't know the answer to that. I don't, I mean, I have mixed feelings about that, right? I mean, I think that if they can get open, they'd be a great tenant and I think that their, their product and what they do would be very attractive to people in that neighborhood. It would be a nice amenity for the branch, which is really the purpose, right? Is, is an amenity for, for the branch. And clearly COVID has created many, many, many challenges for restaurants, especially small business.
And it might continue to create problems.
Right.
In November, who knows?
Right, yeah.
I don't know if I'm allowed to ask a question. As part of this lease agreement, is there any commitment on their part to stay there at least one full year or something? I mean, a lot of people know they're.
Yeah.
Years.
The lease is six months with options to renew for two successive years.
The options are totally to them. There's no commitment on their part other than that six months.
Right, right.
Wait, does it make sense, does it make, to go back, does it make any sense to refund what they've given you and just start a new lease? But Tom said no to that.
He's, he's, yeah, he seems to think would be easier and clearer to do it this way instead of doing.
I think the math's a little funny and it seems like it might get more confusing. Doesn't it, it seems to me to say, hey, we'll give you your money back and let's start a new lease in November.
But understand that it's only three months that you've paid.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, right, right.
Because they're under the impression they paid for four months.
Right. I just see this getting more complicated.
Is there, is there a time issue here? Do we defer this?
No, I, I don't think it's super time sensitive. I mean, they have, they'll get billed before the next meeting for their August rent. But the board could defer that depending on this conversation too.
Yeah.
I mean, that would be an action the board could take.
So, okay.
So you could defer the rent until the next board meeting and make a decision then and investigate further.
Yeah, I guess I'm probably just going to make a motion to be tabled for a month. Thank you. Okay, until we can figure out what their expectations are. Yeah. And get their, get their approval or agreement that it's three months rather than four.
With, with the understanding, we want to work with them.
Oh, yes.
But, so we want to get things cleared up before we all.
Yeah.
So we're sending them another bill, seeing like you hadn't dealt with it, if they just automatically get another bill in the process of this, I'm just saying.
Well, in addition to the motion to table, there could be a motion to
Stop billing.
To stop billing until a decision is made.
I'll make that motion.
We need the first motion.
We'll pile up a bunch.
Okay.
Craig's, Craig's agreeable to withdrawing his motion. So Joe, what, what, what are we doing?
I made a motion that we tabled this.
Okay, are we, no, tabling this action or are we deferring the lease though?
Yeah, I think we're doing both.
Both.
Okay.
Table, tabling the action and deferring, or you can't do both at once?
Yeah, I would think you would need to do two separate motions.
Well, then Craig's can still stand, right?
Yes.
I second Craig's.
Hold on, I gotta get off.
I love Robert.
Okay. Okay, so. My thing.
My motion was to table it until we can get back with them.
Okay, thank you, Greg.
My motion is that we cancel, oh, we got to vote first, right?
Yeah, the second, who was the second on Craig's?
I did.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Okay, so we have a motion, a second, to table item 4D, which is, 5D, which is motion to approve the request of Cafe de Marie regarding the Eastern Branch Cafe lease. Call for the vote. Malavika?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Now, the next motion.
A motion that we stop billing Cafe de Marie.
Okay.
From this point forward until new lease is set up.
Okay. I'll second that. So we have a motion to stop billing Cafe de Marie for the Eastern Branch Cafe lease, current lease until a new lease can be put in place.
With the understanding that we will pass on the previous payments towards that new lease. Does that make sense? Or should we have that in there? Letting them know that we're going to look at those three months that they pay.
Okay. So the motion on the table now is to stop billing Cafe de Marie regarding the Eastern Branch Cafe, the current Eastern Branch Cafe lease until a new lease is established and to defer the previous payments until the new lease starts.
Or to apply that, apply the payments already received to the new lease.
Yes.
Put in place of defer previous payments or apply previous things?
Yes.
Are you keeping up with this, Casey?
And I've got to report.
You okay with that, Tom?
Why is you, are you okay with that? Okay. So we now have a motion regarding this item. And we have a motion by Joe and a second by Tom. And so I will call for the vote. Judy?
Yeah.
Tom?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Yes.
Malavika?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes. Motion carries. Okay. Next item on the, excuse me. Next item on the agenda is motion to approve the position announcements for the library directors. I have a motion in that regard to, to hold in the discussion. I'll move. Okay, thank you, Judy. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, we have motion, a second, to approve the position announcements for the library director. And I know there is discussions. Let me see. Perhaps I can open this. The the draft that we have from Bradbury Miller had three items that they were raising questions about and the first of those was, or at least one of them anyway, was the qualifications regarding previous library experience and Bradbury Miller was proposing to, I thought it would be best that we decrease that from eight years of progressively responsible professional library experience to five years of experience. And we had a recommendation from Jennifer that perhaps we could instead change that to five years of progressively responsible professional library experience, but was, that's required, but eight years is preferred. And so I guess I'd open the discussion on that. I know there was, was some discussion.
Steve?
Yes, Malvika?
Steve, regarding what you just mentioned, I had opened up Public Library Association and ALA, American Library Association websites because I wanted to know a little bit more and I respectfully do not agree decreasing the number of years. It should be, I mean, five years has been for very small libraries, the, the, the experience that they talk about. And we are, as we all know, we are a very huge institution with many responsibilities administratively and otherwise. So I respectfully disagree. According to, and I have a quote here from American Library Association. They say typically 10 years of experience as a librarian with five years of managerial or administrative experience is needed for the size of the library that we have. And the second one that they emphasize is demo, demonstrated interest in professional development through attending workshops and conferences, something which they recommend that we, not we, advertisements for such positions have on the, on the, on the job announcements. So I just wanted to share this with you all.
Good. Thank you, Malavika. Any other comments, feelings on that item? I guess, guess I would say that also just maybe respectfully offering a different opinion, Malavika. I guess as I was talking about this, that perhaps if we, I mean, we're, we're still putting in that eight years is preferred. So we have that out there and, and I understand the 10 and, you know, I'm probably the more, the better. But by having, my thought was that by having the five years of progressively responsible professional library experience required with eight preferred would kind of maybe take into account what Bradbury Miller is saying about the pool of candidates. But if, if we have it at eight, I mean, we're going to get, we're going to get some candidates then and maybe some of them have five years' experience. But if we end up that we don't have anybody with eight years of experience, that still gives us a pool to choose from. And I guess decide what we want to do then, but otherwise I think we'd find ourselves having to go back and start over if we didn't.
Are you going to leave in the four years of administrative supervisory responsibilities?
Yes.
It's a quick rise, one year, then four year.
I'm sorry?
I, I see that as a quick rise. Do you want to change that to two or three years or do you want to leave that at four?
In a smaller organization.
You think it'd be that quick?
It would not be that unusual to hire in at a supervisory level. Or even at a director level in a, in a smaller, in a smaller library. Just be, just because of the applicant pool. So. So that is, that certainly could happen.
Any other comments, feeling on that one?
Um, I've got a couple of, there's an error here. We have many more than four historic districts. I just counted 15 in my head while I was sitting here. I have put an email, I just, and I shot an email out to Matt and Laura Berkeley asking for the specific number. So we don't have four. We've got 15 and probably more than that. I think it's closer to 20 and I was just like.
Current paragraph two.
Yeah. Yeah. I thought you meant over this whole thing. So, no, I'll, I'll shut up and, and then I have one other thing, just in terms of the description of the community. But if, if you're not there anymore, still talking about the other, I apologize. I thought we were done talking about the last paragraph.
About 50 minutes, please?
Okay.
Okay. I, I don't, how do others feel about, you know, sticking with the eight or?
I like the eight preferred.
Preferred?
Yeah, like what you, a minimum. But I don't know what that minimum should be, but eight, eight is the preference, as you mentioned.
Okay, so I guess.
I don't know what the first number should be.
What Jennifer suggested was five is possible.
I would, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I, I prefer the language that Jennifer put in of the five years required but eight preferred. I mean, if we're worried about, you know, it seems like we're between five and eight. Like some people think five would be okay, some people eight, but if you, you're going to get the people with eight regardless. But you might not get the people with five if, if you're not putting that in there. So I'd rather be over inclusive and then be able to choose between those resumes and have the people with five not thinking, oh, I shouldn't even put it in. I don't have a shot. So just to include that language. So I, I would go with Jennifer's suggested language, but it's just me.
Malavika? How do you feel about the discussion? Does that work for you?
I, I think I, I, thank you, Amanda. I would, I would go with what Amanda is suggesting. And I read what you just mentioned, Amanda, Jennifer's language again. And I think that suits the logic that she mentions.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, I understand what, what you were saying about, you know, information from the ALA. Okay, so we'll, we'll use Jennifer's language in there for that then. Another item that they pointed out was had to do with the, they they questioned the, or thought it would be better to not have the residency requirement, but that is a requirement of the city. And also we require that, I believe as Jennifer pointed out in our own supervisor. So I think we're, that, that's the way that one needs to go. And then the the last item they pointed out was the salary, the hiring range. They had put in 100, between 105 and 125 and in Jennifer's comments was that we can only go up to 120 as far as the city was saying relating to similar grades and other positions.
We, we talked them up to 125.
Oh, I'm sorry.
120 is where the city started with and then they went up to 125.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Bradbury Miller was looking for 130.
Yeah, yeah, I got the, I got those two mixed up.
But we got, we got the city of 125.
Okay. And so I guess what Jennifer was suggesting was that we have 110 to 125. And any disagreement with that? Any discussion about that? Okay, hearing and seeing then, we'll leave that or make that 110 to 1.5. One thing that I guess I wanted to propose would be that in the first paragraph, when we're talking about things at the library, that we consider including the an item that was in the the business plan. And that was that pointing out our patent and trademark resource center that's in operation here at Maine. And that being actually the only one of those in Iowa. And so I thought that that might be a, a draw as something that's only happening in Davenport. And I guess we offer that for discussion. Anyone agrees or disagree?
Well, I would agree with you that it might be enticing to someone coming in to know that they're responsible for that. Would it fall under responsibilities or?
No, I was just thinking about it possibly in the, in the, in the opening paragraph.
Okay.
But
Oh, okay.
Where we're talking about.
River share and other things.
Yes.
Okay.
I agree, Steve.
Yeah, there comments and disagreements? Okay, we'll see if we can find a place for that then.
And then Marion's correction on the number.
Yes.
And I just heard back from Laura and I, she says 20, 20, which is about what I thought. So 20 districts in the, in the national, usually, actually, it's a register is a book. It's in the register, not on, even though people use that terminology.
Okay.
And also just if, I don't think it matters, but we didn't quite make 102,000 in the last census. We now have the numbers. It's 101,000 to change.
Yeah.
I can give you that number. I've got it here and I can get it to you before the end of the meeting. If that, if you care about it being this, all of you could say almost 102,000. We actually know the number.
Okay, well, let's, let's be accurate again.
Sure, okay, I can.
Thank you.
I've got it. I've got an email here.
Steve?
Yes?
Steve, regarding the community, the community section within where they mentioned about, I think the Figuart Museum, et cetera, in the announcement, I, I felt, I mean, I read a few advertisements. I felt we, they need to oomph up that community section a little bit. Like, you know, Figuart Museum, yes, some people like to go to museums, but there is also a hundred plus year old Quad City Symphony Orchestra. And I know we can't mention everybody, but we need to, you know, I mean, if you see the Iowa City Public Director, Public Library Directors, you know, announcement, or some others from outside the state, there should be a little bit of excitement in the community area. And I felt that was lacking a little bit. Entice people to come on here. It's not just the Mississippi, but there's lots going out here. And it's not just downtown. So I would say, I thought about, you know, Quad City Symphony Orchestra is also a neighbor, next door at DPL. So like giving them a few snippets of not just a museum, but we have music, we have museums, we have, you know, whatnot happening. I mean, I don't know how to put it, but it's, this just kind of hit me.
I think I was going to mention the same thing, Malvika, because the Symphony Orchestra is like among the 10 oldest in the United States, I think, or something like that.
Yes.
The, I think I would propose that we include that in there.
How about, how about just right after, from multiple live music venues, including the 100 year old Quad City Symphony and the renowned thing? Stick right in there.
Sure. Any other discussion on that? Anybody disagree with that?
This may not matter, but, and I know that it's the Davenport Library, but we are in a 400, there's like 450, 100 or 450,000 people that live in the immediate area. It's a by state, it's a vibrant by state, you know, we're part of a vibrant by state community. It starts to make it feel like what it is. It's not a little town of 101,000 people. Some, 101, 724, by the way, you know, sitting by itself in an Iowa cornfield. It's that we are a big, we are a big, big community. And that I think is reflected in our people and everything else.
It doesn't mention.
It sends as part of the Quad Cities, so you could say as part of the Quad Cities of 450,000 plus people.
Yeah, yeah.
There's got to be some language on the Quad City Chamber of Commerce website that you could pull, I would think.
The visitor bureau, I saw, I actually saw something.
Yeah, 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 something like that, yeah. And by state, you say by state, they'll figure out. Probably. Yeah, they'll probably look.
Because somebody coming from a reasonably good sized community might, like you say, they might see, think, oh, a town of 100,000, that seems a little small, if it's part of a larger metro area, they don't understand that.
Yeah, that's one of the things. Yep, yep.
Okay. Any other discussion on that one? I guess I intend to ask them to include that. Okay, any other comments or suggestions? The position announcement. They will add later the links to like the Chamber of Commerce, our own website, maybe Convention and Tourism Bureau, Symphony Orchestra, maybe a thing, they, they, and their other announcements that I looked at on their website, they did have those items in there. And I guess I mentioned, as I mentioned, when they, when we were considering them as a prospect for doing this work for us, mentioned that even, you know, they even included a cost of living comparison calculator down there, which I thought was really cool for somebody who's looking at a job at a different place. So, okay, so is there anything else that you want to cover? Okay, there you can see now, I'll call for the vote to approve the library director announcement as amended. Do you, let's see, Tom?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Alvika?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes. Okay. Okay, next item on the agenda is discussion of the behavior policy. Amy?
So, yeah, your packet has a red line version of the current policy and then a new version of how that will read. This was something that came, I think partly also from the DEI committee, looking to simplify and and reduce duplication. There are, there are some things that are duplicated here. And then to also give, and make it really clear that all library staff members are responsible for determining inappropriate behavior and for, for dealing with it. So the previous terminology kind of, I think gave the impression to at least some staff members that, you know, you had to be officially designated library staff member in order to do this. And the reality is, is that the person who sees the problem is the person we want to deal with the problem. So so we're really just trying to, trying to simplify. I think then, I mean, then the bottom line is that if, if what somebody is doing is really, is interfering with somebody else's right and ability to use the library, that, I mean, that's really where a lot, a lot of the line is drawn, health and safety, those kinds of things. So if someone's behavior is so disruptive, that it's interfering with somebody else's ability to use the library, then it's inappropriate, or if it's endangering the health and safety of themselves or somebody else or the staff, then that's where we step in.
Any questions or comments?
I'll vote for the sleeping part. I dozed off one time.
Expressive. I like excessive display of.
Yeah. And I like.
A problem with the library?
Yes.
Maybe not now during the pandemic, but it has been in the past.
I like the riding the elevators continuously. Someone must be bored on the floor.
The ones that are red light pretty much are covered with what is left.
The, the sleeping one is, is one we often get questioned about. Staff tries very hard to make sure that that is enforced equally. So, you know, if it's, you know, somebody's grandma who's there with, you know, their daughter and the grandkids, and she happens to snooze off a little bit, we're going to, we're going to address that too, because we consider that a safety issue, because we don't know if somebody has just fallen asleep, or have they had some sort of a medical incident, right? So that's one of the, the big reasons why we insist that people be able to stay awake while they're in the library. Because otherwise, we just don't know if they're okay. So we certainly don't want to be in the position where we assume that somebody's, oh, they're just, they're sleeping, you know, and, you know, and 30 minutes later, find out that they really had a medical emergency and nobody did anything about it. And so that's, that's really what we're looking at there.
Amy, just a, just a question. Did we ever have like recording, photographing and filming people or staff or anything in the library? I mean, did we have to, did we have any issues of that sometime, anytime?
Oh, I think on occasion, when there's been some kind of an incident going on, especially one where the police were contacted every so often, somebody films that just to pay, right? But we also get the news media in, you know, fairly often. Sometimes they're just doing background things and, and things like that. And we just need to, we, you know, and we're fine with that. We're a public building, but they just need to not show patrons, right, who are there without their permission.
Right, right. I mean, or, or like people like patrons doing it without consent, like, you know, filming someone else. I mean, and the reason I ask, the reason I ask is something happened once in our library where they took prompt pictures without consent. You know, so is that a behavior? I mean, I don't know. Is that a behavior or policy where no consent was taken of the library?
Yeah, generally speaking, if somebody's doing that and they're, they're, they're not being disruptive.
Okay.
And they're not taking anybody else's picture.
Okay.
I think we've had some graduation pictures maybe taken like in front of the fireplace at Fairmont. But, but they're also not allowed to, you know, request people to move and, and, you know, and, and, you know, set up props and all those kinds of things. But if somebody just wants to stand in front of the fireplace and have their picture taken, and it's not a big production, and they're not including anybody else, that we're okay with that.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Any further discussion? What I'd like to do then now is, at least for the moment, defer the discussion of items H and I, the unattended children policy, and the discussion of the special collections, collection development policy, and move on to the old business and update and discussion on the director search. Just wanted to mention a few things there. I sent out to board members the information about the schedule that we settled on with Bradbury Miller. And sent out the dates on that also to point out what was going to happen and some of the, what was going to happen and what it would involve. But I just wanted to go back. First of all, I guess would say that it's, I believe we can have a closed session when we get to interviewing folks, at least for the semifinal and I guess that would be at the semifinal and final interviews. There is an exclusion that we have regularly used for the director's evaluation, and I think would also apply to this case. And this is an exception to the Iowa Open Meetings law. And that exception says, is to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation, and that individual requests a closed session. So as far as the irreparable injury, possible irreparable injury, I would see that as being a possibility that, you know, a lot of people, they're going to apply for this job, I guess, would not be telling their employer they're doing that. And if that information were to get out, it could, you know, jeopardize their current position. So that's the case which I believe we can use that exemption and have a closed session.
We would just have to let that know. They have to request.
Yes, right. This is an and, right?
Yeah.
As long as they request it or close it.
Yes. And so with that in mind, the first dates on our timeline is October 27th. We scheduled a two hour meeting to meet with the, with Bradbury Miller. And to have them present the pool of candidates from which six to eight, as they put it anyway. Anyway, some number of semifinalists would be selected. For that purpose, I guess I am suggesting, recommending, planning to have the executive committee do that. Because there's going to be a large, I hope anyway, a large number of candidates to look at. And without going to having everybody submit a request that for a closed session, that might be easier to do that. And the executive committee, I guess, plus Amanda's, we've done in the past, would be less than a quorum. But I wanted to see if there was any other feelings about that, or any concerns or objections? There you can see then, we'll proceed in that fashion. The next item, next item on the timeline would be November 9th and 10th. That would be to interview the semifinalists. That would be done via Zoom. And that I would have a closed session for. And in that case, we could have the entire board present, since it would be a closed session. I would just say that as far as reaching a decision for selection from that group, I would expect that whoever's going to attend that would attend both meetings. And those are currently scheduled for noon to 4:00 PM on the 9th and 9:00 to 1:00 PM on the 10th. And so that would be, I guess, with that, with that stipulation. So if, and they're also, as far as questions, we may need to limit that. Because in the event that everybody was available for that, interested in that meeting, I still believe there would be sufficient time to, for night board members to ask questions of the semifinalists. But I do want to have this as open to as many board members who are interested, but I believe. But I believe those stipulations are significant, but again, open to discussion.
So October 27th, 27th would be the executive committee?
Yes. And then the 9th, 10th, you know, would be a closed session.
But it would be everybody.
But, but, and, you know, but everybody could attend that. Again, we would have to perhaps limited questioners, but at least everybody could see and hear the, the candidates.
Steve, I, Steve, this is Malavika. And about November 9th and 10th, as you had shared the schedule with us quite a while ago, I'd made a note of it. And if it's okay, I would like to be there.
Okay. Okay, and don't have to, you know, speak for that now or if any concerns are come up, we're still a couple of months out from that. So we can certainly discuss this further. And then the final interviews would be December 1st and December 2nd. Those interviews would be about an hour each. And and for those would appreciate it if everyone would be available for those, since this would be the, the big decision.
Are those in person?
Yes, yes, those will, yeah, thank you. Semifinals are via Zoom, the final ones will be in person and the time is, I guess, yet to be determined, because that's gonna depend on travel schedules, other things that are going on that day with the, with the candidates. Any questions, comments on that at this time anyway? Not the final chance, but just throw it out there. Okay, so you're getting hearing none, we'll move on. Guess, let's do one more, let's take a chance, take a shot at the discussion of the unattended children policy, since that's an, that's not an existing one.
It's on the back.
Yeah.
Yeah. Everybody find that? Okay, Amy, would you open this up, please?
Sure, yeah, so this was in the behavior policy, it used to be item 32. And looking at that, we, we felt that we wanted to add just a little bit more to that and, and it seemed like it would be good to just have, just a general unattended child policy kind of separate from the behavior policy. So we're looking at children eight years and older being able to use the library unattended. That, that's the same age we're at right now, that's, that's different, because the board made a change and upped that to 10 for COVID, because we felt with social distancing that, that eight was a little young to, to kind of understand that concept. Children are, you know, just like anybody else, they need to follow the library behavior policy. And if they don't, then we would deal with that. The, the big key is that if the child is left or under eight is unattended and we can't find, you know, a parent or caregiver who's over 12 in the building that we can kind of connect them to, we'll try our darndest to locate that parent or guardian. But if we can't do that within an hour, we're going to call the police, because we're not a childcare agency, right? So we don't have trained and licensed and authorized childcare providers, that's not what we do. So we would take those steps then to reconnect parent to child or guardian to child. So, and then we wanted to make really clear that we are not responsible for the supervision of children. So, so we're not, we're not a drop off daycare, we really wanted to make that clear in the policy.
Does that happen? Has that ever happened?
Oh, yeah.
Just like, oh, someone to watch you.
No, no. Well, you know, and it's not, I don't think there's bad intent on the, the part of the parent or guardian. I think there's, you know what, I have to go do this thing and I don't have anyone to take care of my child right now. You know, and it could be like something that comes up in an emergency or something like that. And, you know, I, I don't want to leave them home alone, right? I've got a, I've got a seven year old, I don't want to leave them home alone. I don't know that that's necessarily safe. You know what, I'm gonna drop them at the library for a little bit, because at least that feels like a safe environment for them, right? So, and sometimes we notice and sometimes we don't. I mean, some seven year olds are quite mature and that child will come in and they'll sit and they'll read a book and they'll do, or play on the computers and they'll do exactly what they need to do in the library. And we might not even notice that they're there, right? But on occasion, it's a seven year old who's responsible for a five year old and a three year old. And, you know, sometimes things get out of hand and we just, you know, and we're also concerned about the safety of those children, because we have public buildings, right? And, you know, a child that age, you know, kids are vulnerable and we don't want, you know, somebody to, you know, walk off with a child either, right? So, so it's a question of safety for the kids more than anything. But I don't think that the parents who are doing this generally have, you know, bad intent. I think that, you know, as, as COVID has certainly showed us, you know, childcare can be a big challenge for folks, you know? And if you're a single parent and, you know, a big emergency comes up and you can, simply cannot take your child to whatever this thing is, they, you know, that might just seem like the best option you have at this point.
So the children at Fairmont that came on their own were, would be okay under this policy? The ones that you just ended up feeding, you know, that were sort of at the library?
Sure, yeah, I mean, if they're over, they're, if they're over eight, you know, and, and things like that, or have a caregiver who's over 12 with them, yeah.
What about the, we get the community room and if there's, you know, one of the goals there, I think, is to be a place for kids.
Right, so we'll be looking at policy for that. We, I met with Chad this morning to talk about that. And, and drop in space, especially like for kids, say grades three to nine, is, is certainly a need in that community. Supervised drop in space. But again, it's going to be a space where kids can come and go. So we're not saying, you know, this is after school daycare and you're not here until mom or dad or caregiver picks you up.
Exactly.
Right, so, yeah.
Amy, quick, how is this policy communicated to the general public? Posted somewhere or is it, I mean, you let them know that you're not allowed to drop?
Yeah, so we, yeah, we post, we try to get that word out the best we can. Oftentimes it's with, you know, is we contact a parent or guardian and have them come pick up the child, right? And, you know, communicate that then, because sometimes it doesn't matter how much you communicate the policy until somebody's caught by that.
Same, make sure people.
Yeah.
Any further discussion on the unattended child policy?
I would just make an observation that it's obviously a compliment, people feel like it's a safe place to leave their children. That being said, it's not what we're trained in, not what we're supposed to be doing.
Okay, then moving on, I'd like to defer the discussion of the special collections policy, since we're running over time and that's a new policy, is that correct?
It, it was part of the larger collection development policy. So when, when the board approved the most recent collection development policy, we pulled this part out. Because there's some, with the local history collection in particular, there are a lot of things that are, are simply a little bit different and, and different considerations that we, that we take into account. At some levels, it's a, it's a little bit higher stakes, whether or not you add something to special collections, to local history collection, because number one, the assumption is generally if, if we accession something that is permanent, it's gonna stay there forever. So we need to be careful about those decisions, because we have, you know, limited resources and space to take care of things. And there's also the, the other side, which is if it's something that we don't take, we want to make sure that we have really good valid reasons for not doing it, because chances are that if, if we say no, that it's gonna potentially end up in the dumpster. So, so we need to make sure that we have a good policy for that.
Let me just back up a little bit and ask. If time was an issue, maybe it was for a minute. So, yeah, okay.
It is for me too.
Okay, thank you, we'll leave it right there. What I would like to have then is a motion to table item I, discussion of special collections development.
Someone.
Thank you, Tom, for a second.
Thank you. Isaac.
And thank you, Valvi. Okay, is there a discussion? Okay, not a call for the vote. Joe?
Yes.
Amanda? Craig?
Yes.
Malavika?
Yes.
Judy?
Yeah.
Tom?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes, motion carries. I will, before I adjourn, I just want to mention the next meeting is on the schedule of meeting locations that we, given several months ago, that the next meeting would be at Eastern, but it will not. The next meeting, our September meeting, will be here in this meeting room at May, not Eastern.
He says the 21st on our schedule, that's the fourth, isn't it, the 17th?
The third, September, the 21st is the third, is it really? It's a weird wrong year.
Yeah, I'm gonna try.
If I may have a motion to adjourn.
Someone.
Thank you, Tom, second. Thank you, Craig. Call for the vote. Let's see. Malavika?
Yes.
Judy?
Yeah.
Tom?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
And my vote is yes. Motion carries and we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for the extra time.
Any comments on that?